I smile really big for some of them.
I'd like to call the 13th meeting of the Public Place City Council of Order. We'll stand and we'll have a pledge and I'll have a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, a united one, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can come to do the business of the city. Please help us in our decisions, Lord, that we will make the decisions according to your plans. In Jesus' name we ask, amen. Well, I am March, not May, in America from 10, but I am going to let my first tell the city administrator to go before me tonight because I can't see. I had surgery on my eyes and I haven't even been able to read. I can't read these or I can't even see hardly. I'm not driving, so don't worry. Don't worry about me. So, Michael, he's working with me tonight and I appreciate that. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so first order is public comment. Anyone wish to comment, please come up to the podium. Public comment. Third, second, first, public comment. Okay, see you in none. Next item is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, ayes have it. Okay, now for the presentation, we now have the July Yard of the Month, which is exciting. That's recognizing folks do a great job keeping up their yard and residents submit recognitions as well as staff. So with that, here's Chief Tamaras.
Good evening, Council. This is our Yard of the Month. That is Judy Rich right there. She resides at 407 Southwest 3rd and she was mighty excited when he recognized her yard. She put some time. I guess she's lived.
What was her name? Excuse me.
Judy Rich.
Judy Rich.
And she has lived in College Place for 10 years and lived in Walwala Valley for 21 years. That's all.
That's beautiful.
Very cute.
Yes, when Ron Norman, our SEO, brought the Yard of the Month sign to her, she started crying.
Oh, that's sweet.
That's really nice.
How's that?
Whoa. Too much, too much.
Do I need to start over?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no public hearings tonight, so we are down to action items. First item is sergeant's contract. Sean will present that. That was introduced at the last council meeting.
All right, so like we talked about last time, the position of sergeant was removed from a bargaining unit sometime back in 2005. So since then, they haven't really had any document specific to them that guides the administration of their benefits or the terms of their employment. So before you tonight is an employment contract that the city attorney has approved that mostly aligns with the standard benefits provided to unrepresented, non-exempt employees. There are a few differences. The vacation accrual, sergeants and police officers work 10-hour shifts, so years 1 through 5 generally accrue 8 hours per month, and we changed that to 10 hours since they work 10-hour shifts. The salary will be increased, not at this time, but as patrol sergeant salaries increase when they bargain, we will keep the patrol sergeant salaries 16% higher, which is fairly standard. Let's see, what else? Overtime is defined as any agency activity outside of their regularly scheduled shift or on a day off. The sergeants will have observed, city observed holidays off, but if they end up working, in the case of an emergency, they would be paid an additional straight time in addition to their salary. And then the termination without cause would require 3 months' notice or pay in lieu of. Everything else pretty much aligns with our current personal employee manual. And then if there is a conflict, the contract would govern. Couple other items, I guess. Equipment and supplies, they would get the same thing that the bargaining member, police officers, get. And then it also clearly defines their on-call responsibilities. Does anybody have any questions? We do have 2 sergeants at this time. I'm not sure I ever quite mentioned that in either presentation, but so Bob Benfield or Robert Benfield and Alan Parker.
Go ahead.
I was ready to move.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I would like to move that we approve the sergeant's contract, effective 8/1/2019.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Okay, ayes have it. Thank you, Sean.
Thanks.
Okay, second item here, resolution support of Pacific Power Blue Sky Grant. I'll present this one. So what this is, is this goes back to the whole solar array issue that we let a contractor out to McKinstry to do some design specs for last fall because there is some properties the city owns adjacent to a new well site off of Maple that they identified would be good for a solar array. We did not get the Department of Commerce grant from the state because that was very competitive and also they were saying that because the well in essence, they feel was new, even though it's a replacement, they used that as a disqualifier. This grant program is much easier to go after. It's from Pacific Power. They have a Blue Sky grant and they basically can pay up to the full cost of the project. And it's actually due this Thursday, so we're running right up against the deadline here. So part of the application packet is passage of a resolution of support. We don't get the money. We won't be doing project. We'll just be trying to put in for various funds, but we feel that in talking with Bill Clemens at Pacific Power, we feel our chances are good because their grant monies for this have been undersubscribed in Washington for some time. So this is just resolution of support and not committing the city to anything financially now.
So all power is probably in one of these documents, attached documents, but all power generated from this goes into the common grid, is that correct?
Yes, it would go into a common grid and then we would basically get a credit to offset our power generation costs for the well site because there's motors and so forth running that. So we would get a credit for that.
Yeah.
That's great.
I'd like to motion to adopt resolution number 19-030, authorizing supporting Pacific Power Blue Sky Grant application for solar array adjacent to Walwala.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Okay, ayes have it.
When would we know? What's the timing on that?
Okay, well, grant application is due this Thursday. They are saying they would let us know by the end of September.
Oh, okay.
So we'll, and we have the engineering on this done already, so if we get the money, we can just go for it.
September, not February, like it says in here?
Yeah, it's September. Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, next one, affordable housing sales tax credit for municipalities. We discussed this at the workshop back in July, but now we are in the various qualifying periods to pursue this. So this is not an additional tax. What the state of Washington did through House Bill 1406 is that in essence, they're given a sales tax credit against what they collect, the state collects, but then it must be used for affordable housing tasks, which is essentially, it can pay for basically vouchers, utilities for low-income rentals or outright building affordable housing. It can be used for a variety of that. And the state legislature created this basically as a mechanism to really begin to address the affordable housing crisis pretty much across the state. So there's 2 steps to this. The first step is basically this resolution of intent that we're declaring that we would want to collect the sales tax credit tax, which we are now in the period to do now. And then you basically have up to another year to essentially passing ordinance, essentially codifying it and then saying what you want to do with it. There's a variety of options and council can take the next year to decide essentially which route to go. Either we can do an inter-local with providers who are already doing that, which would be Blue Mountain Action Council or the Housing Authority. BMAC actually put a proposal together already, which you can see in there. Another option is if the various agencies pool with the county and then with the money with everyone, essentially see if additional housing can be built because the city alone would not receive a ton of money with this. As you can see, it's a little over $11,000, which as far as constructing housing isn't, that would barely do a foundation with that. Yeah. This is very important, though, because with the state sales tax credit, this is good for the next 20 years once it's passed. So what we're asking you to pass tonight is merely the resolution of intent to file this thing and then you all can decide within the next year essentially which, what route to go. I will say upon further investigation, if everyone decides to pool with the county, we would have the potential to essentially get that second half because there's 2 halves. You either have the one-half tax that they're, credit that they're giving all cities, but then there's a second half. If the organization has a qualifying tax and that mental health tax that the county collects, that actually counts as a qualifying tax. So technically, if everyone pooled their resources with the county, you could potentially double the money from the state. But I would just caution, as we consider that, it's key to make sure that all the parties in the county have a detailed plan in which everyone knows what's actually happening with the money, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 19-031, which declares intent of the city to adopt legislation to authorize a local sales and use tax as a credit against the state sales and use tax for affordable and supportive housing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, ayes have it. Okay, next, Rob Ensley to present request to advertise for aerial ortho photo services.
All right, this is my first time doing this. You'll have to.
Welcome. No pressure.
Yeah, no pressure at all.
We're a nice group.
Yeah, it's nice and low-key. It's good. So I'm the engineer tech here at the city engineering department. Every 4 years, the city has refreshed its aerial imagery using drone flyovers and 2020 is the next refresh of that. So we get, so with that, we get photo imagery and the imagery is better resolution than Google Maps and Google Earth. And then we also get, it's called ortho photo data and digital elevation data, which is, they pretty much just send light down, it bows off the surface, you get all your elevations and it's very high accuracy. So we get both a map that has your photos and you can see elevations based off that. And we use that data for pretty much every design. And, well, we don't do a lot of design in-house, but a lot of other engineers will request GIS data from us and we'll use that, we'll give it to them so they'll use designs based off that for this area. And so that's what we'll get with that. And we're just basically looking to go out for bid, for consultant to collect that data with the drone. And in the past, the city has paired with the city of Walwala, kind of piggybacked on their proposals. So what we do is we send out, each of us sends out a bid for our city alone and then as the pair of cities. So we try to, each of us does that. So we try to get lower bids for ourselves or together. And we've already been in contact with them and the proposal is ready to go and they've cleared it, so we're just looking for the go-ahead. Yeah, questions?
It's got to be, you've got to have questions for your first time.
Of course, yeah.
So in the past, are you aware of how many companies have put in RFPs, have submitted?
Not in the past. I'm not aware. Rob, you might know.
Yeah, in the past, 2 aerials ago, we had quite a few. And the typical cost for an aerial at that time, which is almost a decade ago, was in the $35,000, $45,000 range. And we had a firm come in and our last cost was like 6 grand or 5 grand, somewhere in that range. A little higher this time because we've expanded the area a little bit that we're looking at as our UGA starts to expand, but we expect probably the same one to show up and maybe nobody else will even quote because they've been really undercutting most of their competition. So we'll see.
Anyone else?
What are some of the possible, what are some of the uses for this? Is it for business development or what are, I'm guessing on our homepage, there'd be a link, Mike, or these would be released or what are your thoughts on that, the usage?
So what I want to set up in the future is you have a page where you can click certain layers and you can download that layer. And one of those would be contours, which is elevation data. So we can supply that to engineers so they can design anything gravity-based. So that's what I want to get to. We're not quite there yet. People ask for data and I send it to them right now, but I want to get to the point where they can just click it. And yeah, this will provide that data for the aerial.
And I would just add to that, with the quality of aerial imagery collected, there's data attribute behind it called lidar data and you can, you can actually extrude building footprints and trees out of it, so.
So I'm guessing this would be a use to the fire department and the police department, obviously, yeah.
Yeah, and Rob's been doing a great job building up our GIS services, which until late, Robert and I were pretty much doing that, so.
That's neat.
Well, and it would be invaluable for our stormwater work as you start to work on that.
That's a good point, yeah.
So a quick question for you. Do you think that technology has gotten far along, that far enough along that some, you know, somebody out of their garage with a drone can put together a respectable proposal for something like this?
So you can do the flying over with a drone, no problem. It's the, the camera has to be high-grade technology-wise, it's the angle you're shooting down, and the big part of it afterwards, the data processing. You're literally stitching together photos and throwing bad ones out. It's massive data.
Right.
Yeah, it's, you need a firm to do that, yeah. I wish I could do that. Anybody else? And I just said, I use this, I use the map every day in the office, so it's invaluable to me at least. And I create a public map, so the public has their own GIS map for themselves, too, so they can see layers. And we'll get to the download page later, but, so the public has a map for themselves, too.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the engineering department to go out for bid for consultant services regarding aerial photography, color digital ortho photography, and digital elevation data.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Okay, ayes have it. Uh, not done, man, I promise.
But it's not your first time anymore. See, now you're a pro.
Now I'm a pro. So College Place Safewalk Project, and this is implementation stuff for that grant that we received, that Rob put a lot of hard work in from Washington Traffic Safety Commission. So with that, Rob?
Yeah, so we got the grant and then we went out to bid. And then we had 2 consultants apply for their preliminary work. It was Anderson Perry, which is local, and then another firm, which is TD&amp;H Engineering, which is based out of Idaho. They were both kind of head-to-head in our reviews, so we sent out supplemental questions to them. And TD&amp;H came back with a pretty impressive packet, in my opinion. They are proposing using drones to fly over. Well, they're going to use both university students to give them some kind of education and process, but they're going to come walk our sidewalks, take basic data because you don't need a surveyor to do that, to use a level or a tape measure. So they're going to use university students to measure sidewalk condition, ADA compliance, and curb and gutter condition as well. And out of that, we will also get GIS data for the city's entire sidewalk system, which we don't really have data at all yet. We have any stretches of data for sidewalks, but we don't know what the condition is. You can go out in the field and look at it, but if I'm looking at a computer, I don't know what our system looks like. So we'll have, we'll get that after the project. And they are proposing using a drone to take aerial photos, so they'll be closer than the aerial that we just approved. So they'll be closer and they're also going to do surveying property lines against that photo. So they'll be able to see property lines against that photo and then they'll draw in AutoCAD, I don't know if you're familiar with that, it's an engineering drawing program. They'll draw lot lines and dimensions, everything, and they'll send out overdosing packets. And that's the preliminary data. We can't actually construct or do final designs for this, so we're just data collecting right now. So that way, when we want to go, we'll get another grant probably, get funds to go out and do final designs and construct. So this is just data collection, essentially. And TD&amp;H Engineering, they had a pretty impressive packet for doing that. Anything I mustn't be forgetting? Yeah, it's basically. Any questions?
Okay, I'll go. So I'm looking at the budget impact and I just want to make sure I'm understanding this clearly. So we were, we already were awarded a grant for the bulk of the work.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and what was their bid, what was their bid for? Was it the exact amount of the grant?
It came through the exact amount, yes. And, oh, I forgot to mention, so there, you have their proposal agreement for the contract in there and I went through and reviewed it. I tried to play attorney. It was basically a boilerplate.
Cover your ears, Rick.
I know, right? It was like a boilerplate, so I made my comments, maybe point some things out to you. But the basic information of what we want data-wise is in that contract with the exact dollar amount is in there, too. So basic, everything we want is in there, but just hashing out the legal terminology and wording is what's left, essentially, with that contract.
And it was purely coincidental?
No, 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 we wanted the exact amount. We're not looking for over.
So you meant, okay, got you.
This one may require some research, but the last place that I lived, I had, there was a thing on my property, I don't remember exactly what it was called, that said that if the city, I wasn't required, they weren't required to build sidewalks when they built the house, but if the city ever put sidewalks in, they were required to pay a sidewalk in front of their house, in front of the house. And.
The resident was required?
Yeah.
The property owner?
The property owner. And they were like, don't worry about it. And I lived there for 10 years and, you know, nothing happened. So the new buyers got the same lien against their property. But I'm wondering, I look at some places and I feel like they should kind of be in that boat because the whole street is older and then there's this newer property that probably should have had a sidewalk, but doesn't. So, long story short, are we, do we have those? Do we have, would we have to have somebody go back through all the records to find out which ones we have leans on?
So I think that comes down to a municipal code issue and, yeah, I'll let him take over.
Thanks, Rob. Yeah. It's incredible, isn't it?
He did.
So really, by code, and council could actually, I believe, pass a resolution, working a little bit from memory here, to require anybody in town to improve their furniture sidewalks. It is an obligation for the property owner. We've never really ever used it, obviously, for reasons that, I mean, it's kind of obtrusive and difficult, but if there's, especially if there's an issue and there are stripping hazards and all that, they're obligated and we can lien their property. So it's, it's there, it's probably something we should look at again in terms of whether we really want to have it on the books. It's, but it is an obligation, so.
The lien went in online because all the new construction was required to have it.
Right.
Unless they had some, they just kind of waived it.
Right. And again, I mean, there's, there's context to those decisions and that's why it's some of it becomes more of a council call, so.
And I could just be blunt, I guess, the one that drives me crazy is on BAYD Plant Services Building.
Oh, yeah.
Because we have, you can walk almost all the way down that street except right there.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to address, the sidewalk gaps. That's our first priority. And then failing sidewalk and pretty bad-looking segments, so. Any other questions on the sidewalk grant?
I'll take this one.
It's a lot.
I'd like to authorize the city administrator to award College Place Safewalk Project to TD&amp;H Engineering using contract language as specified in Exhibit 1 upon completion of a legal review as a consultant to carry out preliminary engineering studies and design work for 67,000, 500 plus a 10% contingency of $6,750 for a total not exceed amount of $74,250.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Okay, ayes have it. Thank you, Rob.
Nice job, Rob.
Did you want me to? I'm sorry. I was, I thought I was being presumptuous. Sorry about that. I thought I was being presumptuous. If Harvey was here, I'd be.
He would be sitting down.
So anyway, thank you, Mike. Just delighted us all get out here. In fact, Rob, if you wouldn't mind coming up and taking this one, we'd be in good shape, probably. The other observation is notice that his recommended actions do kind of have that same engineering lilt as the ones that I introduced into our agenda bills. They're rather long and complicated, so he's learning from the best or the worst, depending on how you look at it. This particular agenda bill, sorry to get sidetracked a little bit, is our Lampertie Street contract award. If recall, we originally went out with 2 sections of road for overlay, Meadow Brook and Lampertie. We went out to bid on the Lampertie part because that's the portion that TIB ordered us. We got 2 bids that came in on that. They're a little higher than we expected, but that is to be expected this time of year. If you try and bid late summer or early summer, your bids go up. The best time to bid is usually early spring, probably. And we miss that window just because it's just taken time to put the engineering design together. So what you have before you is a request to award the bid to Hubbard Asphalt Incorporated, which had the lower bid of the 2. And in addition to that, we're also asking for an amendment to our contract with Anderson Perry for construction and engineering. The other ones will be out on the site, checking things out, making sure that everything's going in correctly. So that's an addendum to their current design contract. They're the ones that did the design. I should also note that this particular contract needs to go to TIB, this award. They need to approve it first. It's their money. And if they think it's too high, it's possible they may say, hold off till next year. We don't think that's going to happen. We think we're within those limits. But that could happen and that process is in play right now. So we're sending that to them and we'll see if we get their approval. Obviously, you folks have to approve it first. So, are there any questions?
Robert, about how much more was it than what we had guessed?
Again, it's 20%. The, I think it looks about $60,000 more or so. We're fairly low in our transportation fund, but we're still in the black, so we decided to go ahead and move forward with it. There are 3 parts to that, which are not covered by TIB. One is sidewalks. They do the overlay and they do the ramps, but the heating sidewalks in between, they don't touch in this particular grant program. So we're putting out, the bulk of that is actually the repair of the sidewalks. There's also pedestrian railing for safety in there and there's also some quarries, spoils to help take care of some erosion we have on the north side. So we've added some to it that we'll have to pay out our own pocket. So we've added some to it that we'll have to pay out our own pockets.
I'm just going to ask a clarification. So your last sentence, you just said we might have to pay some out of our own pocket, but the bulk of the project, as we see it right now, is covered by the grant?
Yes, the bulk of it it is. The portion that we would spend altogether would be $117,000, that includes engineering and all the extra stuff. I think the extra addendums to the construction contract itself was about $81,000. The last exhibit that I attached should have that spelled out for you? Yeah, thank you. So you'll see alternate 1, 2, and 3, if you add those up, that should equal the, I don't know if I have it here, it's $81,000 something and some change.
And we expect to have it in our budget for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not going to have a huge surplus at the end of the year, but that's the nature of that transportation fund, as it goes up and down as we fund it, so we've decided to go ahead and move ahead. Please bring it to you.
Well, and I would just argue, too, with that grant program, keep in mind, we're also, for next year, we're putting an application on overlay Meadow Brook, and if we don't do this, typically, TIB won't give another grant in that same grant program, so that's why it's essential we get this moving, so it doesn't delay that.
Yeah, TIB rewards success.
Yeah, yeah.
And completion.
Thank you.
I'll motion to authorize this administrator to execute the Lampertie Street overlay and sidewalk construction contract with Humbert Asphalt for $366,105.75 and $32,000 contract amendment with Anderson Perry for construction engineering services with an overall 10% contingency for a total not to exceed amount of $437,916.33 contingent on TIB.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, ayes, have it. Thank you, Robert. Okay, now, next item, board representation. I just wanted to bring this up. So Mayor Harvey Crowther represented us with two organizations, so he was on the policy board for the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, and then also Valley Transit. Now with the MPO, typically, the representation there could either be, historically, with some of the other communities on there, it's either a council member or staff member. With Valley Transit, historically, it's been a council member.
It has to be a council member.
Yes, council member. So the question there is, do you want to keep the representation of those two boards with whoever is the mayor, or do you want to change it, or what's the general pleasure of the council?
Have we had any staff express interest in being part of the MPO? Or representation?
The only thing I would say with that is, is if there is a desire for them, my prior life, when I was in Colfax, I was the president of the RTPO there, which is the equivalent of that, in the four county area, so. So I mean, technically, if you all wanted that, I'd be happy to represent there, but that's on, up to you all.
How often are the meetings?
I believe once a month.
For both organizations?
I'm not sure what Valley Transit...
Valley Transit, we meet the third Thursday. So Valley Transit is made up of elected officials, three from the City of Walla Walla, two county commissioners, and two from the City of College Place. So when I started on Valley Transit, there was Greg Tompkins and I served on, and then when Harvey became mayor, then he took over. That was as Greg was transitioning out, so now it's been Harvey and I the last couple of years. It's fun.
And it's once a month?
Once a month, Thursday night at 7:00 on the third Thursday.
Yeah, so just something to think about, I don't know if you all have a desire either way on that, but...
So it sounded like it was a transition when Harvey came, for him to go on that one, and then you were saying that it's, well, Lisa, in one example, where it's typical that it's the, it would be Mike's position, not the mayor's position, but whatever that's...
Yeah, I think Valley Transit would be fine by a council member. And yeah, MPO, if you want to do it, great. Knock yourself out. But who wants to come to Valley Transit with me?
When does Valley Transit begin?
Thursday at 7:00, third Thursday.
When does the MPO begin?
So Mike, right now, you're looking for the general consensus on whether you should pursue that in Harvey's apps?
Yeah, or if a council member wants to.
I have no, yeah.
Does it have to be done tomorrow?
No. I just wanted to bring that along.
Yeah, because we have a new mayor coming in and a new council member, too.
Okay.
How soon did they want an answer?
Well, the reason it was brought up is because Valley Transit sent me an email, like, "Hey, are you going to have a representative?" So it was evident that they wanted some sort of interim representation.
Could we assign you to represent us until such time as our council is full again, and then we decide?
That, I mean, it could work, too, it's whatever council's pleasure is.
Because it seems like, you know, whoever the mayor is will have an opinion, whether it should be you or a council member, or whatever. And so, but I hate to just wait and not have any representation.
I mean, so I do exist, I'm trying to represent Valley Transit. Just want to throw that out there, but if someone else, if you want to go, you can go.
I think we're talking more about the MPO.
Well, no, not Valley Transit needs to be a council.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's...
I think I talk enough for more than one person, I'm just... Everybody knows that.
I would like to move that we authorize, that we authorize Mike Rossettello to be City College Place's representative to the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and until such time as we have a complete council, and we will make the final...
Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Okay, ayes, have it. Okay, for administrative reports, a couple items here. The first one is recreation.
Can Marge second? Can the mayor second a motion? That's okay? Okay, just checking. I don't want to get in trouble.
Okay, so for administrative reports, recreation event plan, worked, we worked on this with our Park Arbor and Recreation Advisory Board, and then our Whitman Fellow and myself, and we did a survey across the community through Survey Monkey, and then also evaluated existing conditions, what our comparable cities do, and then essentially future direction. So it's a very lengthy document, please take a look at it. The meat of the documents, about 32 pages, but with the appendices, it's about 242 pages.
I was like, oh my goodness, oh good.
Yeah.
Just the survey.
It's a very big document, but it's bookmarked in Adobe, so it's easy to get to key areas. So I'll just go over the key takeaways. So based on surveys and talking with folks and stakeholders, folks really like our community events, so thanks to Lisa for working on all of that, the Farmer's Market, Freedom Fest, and Winter Fest. There were some suggestions for additions, like concerts in a park or a spring event. Staffing's an issue, though, so if that were to be explored, I know Tito Espinoza next door, he's evaluating, working with the business owners on a business coalition to get a downtown business group going, so we could get the main street tax credits, that may be a good place to move that, too. So working with him on that. Key takeaways for recreation program, and the residents really like the pilot recreation program we've been working on with United Way, Campfire, and all of that, and they want to see more of the youth recreation programs. The times in which they said they would like to see rec programming is naturally during the summer, and then after school, as well as, believe it or not, Sunday afternoons, rated very high. Yeah. Survey results indicated that the adult rec programs are lower priority in the City of Walla Walla fulfills that need, but that the youth rec programs is really where the meat and bones is at, where we need to concentrate. Future direction, the Park Arbor and Recreation Board, they were evaluating that, and there's a couple of options. It's continue the ad hoc partnership with United Way, but that's a year-to-year thing, and we don't know in the future if they'll always be willing to do that, because they've expanded their coverage area, and now other communities are requesting the same, so not really sure if that can be depended on your year, or joining with City of Walla Walla, or working with the school district. And Park Arbor and Recreation Board, one of the things that they thought was wise was to really begin discussions with the school district about in the future, maybe a hybrid position within the activities department over there, similar to what City of Tappanish does, because they do that, to run the youth rec program, where half of it's covered by the school district, a half is covered by the city. And in talking with them, there is some staff and time available potentially for that, so that's an option. So that's just a little overview, and I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments or thoughts.
I really like the idea of working together with the school, which we can run, and one question for them is, I know I've lived in a number of places where there's a summer free lunch program that the federal government pays for, and I'm wondering if that could be coordinated with our...
That was done this year. That was through United Way and Campfire. City of Walla Walla delivered the lunches over at Davis Elementary School, so.
Well, and I was thinking it would be kind of cool if you coordinated it with the activities, so that it showed up where the kids were.
Yeah, that happened this year.
Okay, awesome. You're all over it.
So I would just ask, please look at that study, and I'm talking with the school district right now, been talking with the new superintendent, Frye. We are going to try and work together on a proposal and make something like Tappanish happen.
I just want to say that when I talk to people about the city, these activities and the youth things are the things that they talk about as why our city is getting so much better. You know, a lot of what we do is kind of behind the scenes, and they don't really see it, but that, people really appreciate that. And can we just take two minutes and say, "We have a lot of pride, I have a lot of pride." I'm so excited. My son didn't have his ballot, I drove him down to the elections office to make him get a replacement ballot to be voted.
So any other thoughts on this?
Let's get that.
Thank you, Mike.
Let's look through it, yeah.
Yeah, well, please look at this study, and they'll be coming up as we do budgeting for next year. Okay, so next one, community park development, and this is just to keep everyone up to date on that. So per the development agreement with Haven Homes, and this predates me, but they had to donate property for a park, but it didn't really say where and to what extent, and then also didn't require the equipment be included. As stuff transpired out there, we negotiated with them to get a little more stuff out there. So what's happening is there is some land between Homestead and Dones, south of Fourth, about 1.67 acres, and they're going to start development on that relatively soon here. And as you'll see in the drawing schematics, in addition to giving us that land, they're also going to turf it as well, put down our official turf, and then also put in three pieces of playground equipment, stub-out utilities, put a flagpole bench and garbage can out there, and actually put in some decent infrastructure. So considering we really have a legal recourse to require that, it's moved in a relatively good direction. So the plan on that is that park should be ready for primetime next month. Yeah, so, because we've permitted it, so it should be ready next month, and then when it's to the satisfaction of our development code, one of the things that's going to be coming before you is essentially a resolution to name that park Veterans Park, because through our park study last year, we actually found out historically, that random piece of property in the middle of the block behind the fire department has like a bench in it. That was Veterans Park, but not many really knew who it was, so that isn't really good. So the idea is that this park, which will have a lot of stuff on it, would be rename that, and it would be a nice sign and flagpole and so forth. So once it's fully developed, there'll be a resolution, that'll come before you request moving that nomenclature over to this park site.
As a veteran, I say yes.
On behalf of my mother, I thank you for making sure there's a bench there. She had a similar park on the block the distance of her house that my kids loved, but with no bench, it was really hard for her to take them there.
Mike, first.
Any, you mentioned bathrooms, and you know, you mentioned that we're getting a pretty good deal, given that we don't have anything listed out. You did mention some utilities, would there be plans for us, then, to like install bathrooms or anything along those lines?
I would say in the future, it's something we're going to have to look at, because that park is not, I mean, I bike that area a lot, and there is no other parks that immediately close, so I think with that population density out there, it's going to warrant a bathroom. Unfortunately, with the deck of cards I was playing with, we could not really, I was lucky I got what we got out of the lump, so.
So, I don't want to be a buzzkill, but we talked about doing some sort of camera out there, so we don't have a similar Kiwanis.
If you recall, in last year's Capitol Facility Plan, we actually have that earmarked for next year to put the cameras, so it's still out there, because the plan was that we was guessing, but hopefully the park would be done, and from all of our talks with them, it looks like it should wrap up by next month.
Are we going to have like an opening ceremony?
Yeah, yeah. We're coordinating that the Park Arbor and Recreation Board, as soon as they have it in an appropriate condition, where we feel we can then take ownership of it, we will then schedule that.
So just to clarify, these designs incorporate like a future site for a bathroom?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there is some utility stubs off of Dones Avenue, and basically near that corner, near where the ramp is at, that's where a restroom could be placed, because there'll be stubs right there.
You mentioned they were going to install, I thought you said, artificial turf?
Turf, yeah.
So like a plastic composite, or are we talking about...
It's sod.
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 Sod, it's turf, but that was better than the original proposal, which was hydroseed, which if you go out there, it's a lot of mud, and that one didn't work well.
Yeah, so actual grass looks something, okay. Great.
Okay. Any other? Okay, then we will go to the next item, and this will be coming back at a later time, but I just wanted to make sure you were all aware of it, which is the community garden concept. So this is for that property in the middle of the block adjacent to the fire station. There is a volunteer group that has formed over at Walla Walla University called Anactus, and one of the projects they were interested in taking on was the establishment of a community garden, where they would build plots and lease plots of people and make other plots available and so forth. So worked with Professor George Perez on a draft agreement with that, just mainly where we would charge for water, since it's utility, we can't gift that, and they would be able to charge accordingly and cover their cost, but the fact that they would build in... But the fact that they would build and, you know, be responsible for the maintenance of the, and it's a year-to-year lease, and it protects us, so the general concept is that property that had, that was the Veterans Park that we're moving over there, that that could be like a community garden. Yeah.
So I've been involved in community gardens in the past, I'm a little confused though, if Wallowa University manages this, do, so they get to choose who gets to participate in the garden, or how is that going to work? How does our community get to actually get involved?
The, the idea with that is that would be open to the community at large, that they are, they weren't going to restrict use on that.
Okay, it's just whoever, like a first come, first served, gets a plot, and they can grow whatever they want. Are we talking about floral garden, or food-type garden? It has to be all food-type stuff?
That's what, that's what was communicated to me.
And then, what's happening with the food? Do people get to keep their food, or are we distributing it to like a food pantry or something? Do you know?
Essentially, the plots that would be leased out, they would get to keep the food. It sounded like some folks in their volunteer group, they would have some plots, and they would essentially give that to food pantries and so forth, so.
And so I guess I'm a little confused about the first come, first served. There, Wallowa used to run a community garden on Wallowa's property.
Oh.
Long time ago. It went for about four years, until the people that were really into it all graduated, and then stopped. But, that's the only one I've been involved with, but what they did is, in order to have a garden there, you had to sign a little lease. And it said, these are the rules, and you know, this is what you have to do. It wasn't like really, so you sort of had to apply and sign the little lease. And it was first come, first served in that way. But it wasn't just come, plant, and stuff.
Yeah.
Oklahoma Land Rush.
Yeah.
Yeah. Get your flag!
So I would ask them if they're planning to do something like that.
Okay. I will request that.
Is that how they needed where you move?
Yeah, I mean, you, you were assigned your spot, and you had to be a part of keeping the areas clean, and the common grounds, and share tools, or things like that. But I, so leasing, that I wasn't part of. So how, how are they going to decide what to charge, and what do they do with the money?
Well, the, the discussions with them is what they charge would be dictated from essentially whatever the water bill would be out there, and then plus the general costs were. They know during the summer, they don't have a ton of students staying around here, so there was discussion of having essentially a maintenance person, make sure that it's in acceptable condition, because that's my big concern. I don't want everyone leaving during the summer, and then we have something that does not, does not look good. So they would charge, and I've asked them to come up with a budget of this, so we could essentially figure out what it is, but enough to cover essentially the water, and then maintain the general operation and maintenance of the-
I bet you will find that there's going to be a lot of interest from people who, especially once like live in apartments-
Yeah.
-that don't have space, that year-round, that they're going to want their little patch of land to grow some food on, just because they want to be able to have that garden, so I think year-round maintenance of it will be a problem.
Okay.
I think people are going to enjoy it. I love the idea, it's a great community building, and a gathering place. Excellent idea.
Okay, well, I just wanted to put that on all of your radar, because we are working with them on that. Their university administration is reviewing it. I was told they, we're going to get it back to us likely at the end of the month. Oh, could you pull up that map again, Lisa, because that's, that's good, that's the property in question. Right next to the fire department, it has a tree and a bench and a shadow, and that was considered the fourth park for many years.
So Rob, the aerial photos that we get, are they going to be a little bit better than this? Just a little bit? I was like, am I not zoomed in? What's that logo?
It is too small for a Veterans Park, but it's a great plot for a community garden.
Yep.
Exciting.
Yep.
Crystal cleared me out of time.
Okay. And then with that, here's the last agenda item, panhandling signage, and with that, Chief Tamara's.
So Mr. Rizzatello and I actually discussed this about a year ago, when Pasco started their anti-panhandling, and they had a lot of success with it. Well, many of you know that Wallowa has had a lot of success with their new panhandling, anti-panhandling signs, as a result of some, some crime and some fraud, and actually an assault with a knife at the McDonald's there. What that had, because of the success of their panhandling, they are now coming into College Place to do their panhandling, we've seen an increase in that. So we would like to install some panhandling signs to help deter that, and these signs are, not saying do not give to charity, or not to give money out, we're just asking them to give it to a local charity that will ensure that the money is being spent responsibly for food and shelter, and job placement, instead of being misused. So with that, we would like your blessing to move forward, and to help reduce crime and fraud in our community.
What's the cost of the signs?
I haven't done a price cost on the signs, I'll, I'll, I can certainly do that, but they're not going to be very expensive.
They can fly with our sign code?
How many do we think you are going to need?
We haven't decided how many, but we would like to, the areas where we really need them are near Walmart, a couple places here on College Avenue, down over by Del Taco, some of the areas that you see a lot of transit and panhandling.
Have you talked with Chief Bieber, has Wallowa, is this, I've only read Facebook comments on these types of things, have they really experienced a decrease just in a couple of months, or have you noticed?
Yeah, it's made a big, a big decrease.
The usual ones at Dutch Brothers are gone.
Yeah, McDonald's ones are gone, too.
A couple of sort of thoughts, I don't know that it's really, one is, I think we might want to, the thing with giving to panhandling versus giving to charity is it's, it's very impulsive. And so when you have that impulse, if you then don't have any way to do it, then you'll forget about it. So we might want to hint really hard to our local charities, that they might want to work with the businesses around where these signs are, to have like donation boxes or something, or-
It's a great idea.
Donate right then and there. Because I know, you know, I always intend to, and then, you know, stuff happens, and I can just- My other question is kind of more on why panhandling, and I know that there's fraud, et cetera, but is there a place around here where they can get shelter with a pet?
Oh, I do not know.
I think that's something that would be good to find out, because I know a lot of shelters won't allow pets for obvious reasons, but a lot of people won't go to a shelter if they can't take their dog, and my psychiatric nurse practitioner says, if you have any kind of mental health illness, pets are like the very first thing you should have, is treatment. So a lot of, several, I shouldn't say a lot, several of the panhandlers that I saw regularly were there with their dogs, and so I know that was a big issue the last place I lived around.
I remember, see, I have recently seen some panhandlers on Plaza with a dog. I haven't seen that in College Place.
I haven't seen it in College Place either.
Sure. Lot of, yeah, don't, I don't know.
I, I can ju, I know of one that is going to be accepting pets, which is actually the, the camp that the city and county has, because I'm on the council housing, and that was discussed, so they are, at least, I can't speak to the others.
Well, I don't think they all have to, but there should be an alternative somewhere close, so that would be great.
Yep.
And of course, we still need to work with the businesses in which the signs will be erected, but just getting your permission to move forward.
Yeah, so we don't have to make a motion, right? You can just go by, because they're going to be-
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Happy shopping.
Okay, and with that, that is what we have for the active agenda re-
Yes, I've been tasked with, what's the name? Seven fifty-nine? I think we'll probably, although we went over last time, let's say twenty minutes, to discuss with me, legal counsel representing the city matters related to agency enforcement action, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation, or potential litigation to which an agency, government body, or a member acting in official capacity is, or is likely to become, the party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency, or is having forty-two states on one, zero, subsection I.
Nice.
Hello, this is the media to the public.